Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Socorro, Texas. It is August 5th, 2025. We call this meeting to order.
Good afternoon. Item number two, Establishment of Coram. Andrew Arroyos.
Here.
Enrique Cisneros.
Here.
Thank you. David Estrada.
Here.
Julie Dominguez.
Here.
Osvaldo Reza. Absent. Yolanda Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a coram with five commissioners present. Item number three, open forum. Esteban Juan, do we have anyone that would like to speak? Thank you. Item number four, consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second? I have a motion made by Andrew Arroyos, second by Julie Dominguez to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Regular agenda. Item number five, considering take action on the proposed approval of a preliminary and final plat with a waiver request from Section 38-50 Provision of easements to waive the easement requirement for the extension of Ernest Road, a waiver request from Section 38-8.2 Preliminary Plats and Data Subsection C1 to waive the stormwater drainage data Subsection C2 to waive the soil analysis requirement for the Avila subdivision being track 7-A and track 7-B Block 27 Socorro Grant and located at 11599 Socorro Road, Socorro, Texas. Mr. Voltejo.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Jose Voltejo, Planner with the City of Socorro. Item number five on the agenda is the Avila subdivision preliminary plat, final plat, and variance request. I'll let the presentation load on the screen. So the property owner is Mr. Jose I. Avila. We're having some technical difficulties. Our apologies. There we go. Thank you. And once again, this is item number five on the agenda, the Avila subdivision preliminary final plat and waiver request. The representative is Mr. Jose Avila and Ethel Bedincourt. The property is 4.71 acres. The zoning for the property is A1 agricultural and R1 single-family residential. The current land use is residential and agricultural. And so, once again, the request is for approval of a preliminary plat and final plat with a request to waive the easement requirement for the extension of Ernest Road, a request to waive the stormwater drainage plan requirement, and a request to waive the soils analysis requirement for the Avila subdivision. Staff is recommending approval of the waiver request from Section 38-50 Provision of easements to waive the easement requirement for the extension of Ernest Road. Staff is also recommending approval of the waiver request from Section 38-8.2 under preliminary plats and data Subsection C1 to waive the stormwater drainage plan requirements. And staff is recommending approval of the waiver request from Section 38-8.2 Preliminary Plats and Data Subsection C2. This would be to waive the soils analysis requirements. And lastly, planning and zoning staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, preliminary and final plat for the Avila subdivision with the condition that the engineering review comments are met prior to recording of the final plat. And so, on the next slide, you'll see that the property is situated along Socorro Road within close vicinity to Lisa Dan Road and Ernest Road. This is a zoning map for the property. The property being outlined in the thick red line. The portion towards Socorro is zoned R1. The rest of the property is zoned A1, which is agricultural. This is a view of the property from Ernest Road. And then followed by a view of the property from Socorro Road. And then you can see on the aerial image the 4.71 acres for this property. And then this is a preliminary plat showing the house in the front, some of the topography lines. And on the final plat, you can see how they're proposing to divide this property to where the lot number one would have access through Socorro Road, lot number two would have access through Ernest Road. And then this is the waiver request from the applicant requesting to waive that extension of Ernest Road, the stormwater drainage plan, and the soils analysis. And so, once again, the request is for approval of a preliminary plat, a final plat, and a waiver request for the Avila subdivision. And at this time, staff can answer any questions. We also have Ms. Ethel Bedincourt present to answer any questions as well.
Real quick, so they want to go from an A1 to an R1, but they're not planning on building anything in the future or anything? It's just, what's the reason for them wanting to rezone specifically?
No, so the zoning is going to stay the same. The applicant's daughter, Ms. Ethel Bedincourt, is trying to build her residence on lot number two. So right now, it's one lot, one 4.71 acre lot. And so, they're plating it so that they can create two lots.
So if they create two lots, but we waive the... I think you're waiving the... No, there is no waive, I'm sorry. For accessibility, will they have an accessibility route to that second lot? Like an easement for that?
Yes, so you can see the pictures that were taken from Ernest Road. That's going to be their access points, or like their driveway?
I'm sorry, yeah, okay. I get it.
So at the present time, it's actually blocked off?
Yes, correct. Right now, it has a yellow... Yeah, the barrier.
Yes, but that is a road that goes that way.
Yeah, so the... There's two properties that are in between Ernest Road. And so typically, the staff looks at every request. And so ideally, it would be nice to have that extension of Ernest Road. But because the applicant is requesting a waiver to not require it, she would still have access to lot number two. You know, it's her decision to proceed with the waiver. There's, you know, we can't guarantee an approval that it'll get waived.
Right. And since there's no... They're not going to build anything on it yet, but if they do, then they would be required to have a grading permit and all that stuff, right? Since they're just replating right now, they don't really need a soils test, a stormwater drainage or anything, right?
Well, from my understanding, they're going to be utilizing the property with its water rights. It currently does have water rights. And so, it's become like a...
Non-issue?
No, but I mean, if you think about it, you have to grade the property so that the water collects on this...
Correct.
On the ponding areas, right? But it defeats the purpose of having water rights if you...
Correct.
If you have to comply with this requirement. And so, it makes sense to, at least to waive that portion of the stormwater drainage plan if they do intend on using the water rights. So part of the submission, when it comes to the construction of the house, then yeah, they would be required to... The drawings themselves will show us the finished floor height, which has to be raised so that whenever they do use their water rights, they're not accidentally flooding their house, right?
Agreed. I don't have any more questions.
I don't have questions.
I have a question. So, okay, so I see the outline in red. And then that first section up along Socorro Road in yellow, is that one particular parcel right there? Is that already divided?
No.
The yellow?
It's a... So it's the whole?
It's the whole thing.
Yeah.
And so, right now, it's one parcel. How can it be part of it, R1, and then the other part, A1? If it's just one parcel?
I couldn't give you an honest answer. I've seen lots like that, that have multiple zonings in one property. I think the last one that I remember is the Revive Church, the plat on Burt Road. That one, I believe, is zoned A1 and rural estate.
So this has multiple zonings on one parcel? That's what we have right now? And so, we're being asked to... They're going to divide this one parcel into two separate parcels. And can you put that final plat up?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that's the final plat. Where's Socorro Road? Like, it's on that side, right?
Yes.
And so, which portion stays R1 and which portion stays A1?
Just that small portion. I mean, you can't see it here, but that, where the cursor is... I mean, we don't... This isn't an application to rezone. It's a plating, a subdivision application, so they're simply dividing the lot. The zoning for the property stays unaffected.
So that front, it's not, I don't think it's even a quarter of the length of the size of it. That'll stay R1. You'll have two separate lots, lot one and lot two. But lot one is still going to have two separate zonings. That's not going to change. It's going to stay A1 and R1.
Correct.
And then there, the easement into Ernest Road, the lot right up above it, does that still have an easement to connect to Ernest Road on the other subdivision?
No, so that property is also still in tract form.
Does that have an easement or no? It doesn't have an easement?
That I can recall, no.
And, but this one does have an easement.
It doesn't have an easement, but it's a requirement whenever you have a property that's a budding, like a stubout. In this case, the Ernest.
It's a requirement to include an easement for any abutting streets, I guess, that might go through there in the future.
Correct.
Can you go back to the other yellow and red one? Please? To the zoning one? Okay, so I see Ernest Road on the lower half and then Ernest Road on the other side.
If I can ask a question, sorry to jump in. It might help the commission, Mr. Voltejo. Again, just to clarify, who owns the back property behind this application there? I know there's a proposal on lot two. Who owns that? Is it the same owner or a different?
It's a different owner.
It's a different owner.
Different owner.
It's a nursery.
What's that?
I think there's a nursery. There.
So nursery there? A nursery as like a...
Like tree nursery or?
Tree nursery, yeah.
Yeah, the only issue on the legal side I think you're picking up on is the... You don't want to do something that creates a landlocked situation. Although they have the back entrance to Ernest, but I don't know if that's being used on that other side. Would that other owner?
Because the other owner will continue to have access, but once, like, once the easement is removed on this parcel, then Ernest Road will never be able to connect. Which, I mean, you know, I'm not saying I would want that to happen. I'm just thinking of what's out there. Well, the only thing I see is the differences in the zonings right there. Because it seems just odd that there would be two zonings on one parcel, and we can't take care of that right now? Like, within what we're being asked to do? We just want to leave it because it's too... I mean, it's one parcel, two different...
That's the property.
How do you handle that? I mean, what govern, like, what ordinance governs that parcel? Like, what zoning ordinance? Is it R1 or... Because they're both going to be on one parcel.
Yeah, to me, it looks like, because it looks like there's a lot line drawn in there.
That's what it looks like.
Or is that just... Okay. Yeah, usually a line would indicate there's a deed or there was a division, and it was actually cut out of the... So if it's one together...
Can you go to the preliminary plat? See, that line right there, it looks like if it's another parcel. Right, right behind the house, that one right there. And that's where the zoning is at.
Could it be the tract line? If you go back to the legal description, there were several tracts that make up the parcel. It is all one owner.
So it could be the tract, the preliminary plat?
There could be the tracts.
Uh huh.
Are being shown. It could be the children's tract towards track 7A and 7B of block 27.
I think that's the correct.
Yeah, so the 7A is the R1, 7B would be the A1?
Yes.
Is it uncommon for us? I mean, because I haven't seen something like that, where they are identified as a A1 and an R1 together as one big parcel? I mean, I can see where you say that there's a tract. So track A would be the residential part because there is a home there. So then the track B would be the agricultural part. But, so if we divide, or right now, all we're doing is actually just waiving. We're not rezoning. We're just waiving the four items on there. But that's it. No rezoning.
They're requesting approval of the Avila subdivision plat, which is a preliminary and a final. And then they're requesting the waiver for the stormwater drainage plan requirement, soils analysis, and the dedication of what would be the extension of Ernest Road.
Okay.
The easement, drainage, and soils. I'm, I get, I'm fine with that. Right, that's...
Right.
I'm fine with that.
Well, I mean, I... The whole thing that they're trying to do, I think, is fine, but I just wish we could take care of the zoning issue. Like, but I don't know how to... Like, I would want, I would say, okay, let's turn lot one into either all R1 or all A1. And then lot two is already A1.
Would that be like a separate request that they would have to do?
This, I checked our zoning map to see if there's any permission on when that might zoning line would take place. And I just had the permission. I can look into it. Rezoning is a court applicant to do. We don't change the zoning. And if there's... So I think that he's, that is behind the home and living in the home, I don't see the need to, for them to rezoning. As they are living in the home and we are farming the agricultural edge of the...
So, my two cents real quick is, we've never seen it like this at this commission, but the one of my clients, I know that the front of their... And it's more because of the central appraisal district. They get, taxes are much more affordable if it's agricultural. And then I'll use another example, Ralph Duran, who has chickens on one side of his property. That's zoned differently compared to the rest of the property. So a lot of times, that's more for the central appraisal district. I don't have an issue with the drainage. My concern is that if we don't have a bite of the apple for the easement now, we'll never have it. And this development in particular really only has a few outlets, to Socorro, to Pasciencio. And a lot of it, so I really have a hard time with that part of it. The other thing is if somebody wants to develop on that land and they don't want to do the soil study or the soil analysis, again, if you're going to develop it and keep it forever for your family, I don't have an issue with that. But if you sell it down the road, that's where it can be an issue for the city or whoever buys it. But I do have some questions for Mr. Body. If we could, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I have a motion made by Enrique Cisneros, second by David Estrada to go into executive motion. I'm sorry, motion carried.
Will everybody step out? Would take a couple of minutes, and then we'll let you know when we're done with the executive session.
And it's all in package two, right? It's all in package two.
It's even bad comes in with the better.
Yeah. Or recommendations.
Or he left.
No.
No.
Hey.
So after everybody, we will return back into regular session at 6:32 PM. I don't have any more questions unless anybody else has questions.
So my concern is that there's future connectivity that the city was planning for. And if we waive the approval for the easement, the city won't have access to that in the future. And I think that, and I'm completely aware of, hey, we do not have the other side because of the budding property, and we don't know when that will happen. What comes to mind for me is when Horizon Boulevard turns into Bowman, there were properties that were set back because of the easement, and there was one property that was not. And so that has made a major road that connects from Alameda to Socorro, it turns into one road, and it just... The point is, is that if we're here to make decisions for future roads and planning and zoning, and how the city's going to grow, and if we don't make the most of this opportunity, we just won't have it again. And it's one of the oldest neighborhoods, and we continue to grow here, and I think it's very important that we, at least in my opinion, that that easement is very, it's something that we have to try to get. My question for the landowners is, do you guys have the design of how far the property's going to go back, or is it going to face earnest, is it going to be a little bit setback?
The house is going to face earnest.
Can you come up to the podium, please, and state your name, please?
The house is going to face earnest.
Can you state your name, please?
Roberto Etancur. So, yes, the property, the owner, will be facing earnest.
So you guys do have the plan?
Yes, we have, yes.
Okay. Why wasn't that submitted in with this packet?
Miguel Morales with the Ray Engineering. The reason it's not in there, it's not necessary for us right now. When we submit for a permit for the house, then that's when all that comes in, and that's when we'll be doing the soil tests and all that. Until we have this approved, we're waiting on that. So that's the reason it's not on the subdivision plan, and it's not required to be on that plan.
But you're requesting a waiver for the easement, and you're requesting a waiver for the soil treatment. I understand that it's not a requirement, a box to check off to submit it, but I think it would make our job easier to vote yes or no based on, because you are requesting these waivers, right? So I definitely understand that you advise them that, hey, it's not necessary to submit it, but because you, if we weren't asking for waivers, then makes everything easier. But I think it would have been, made our job easier if you would have submitted them.
Well, again, the, I'm sorry, the waivers asked because we're not being approved yet. So once we get approved, then we will do all that, that's required. That's the reason we ask for the waiver right now.
So if you're going to ask for the waivers later, would it be, would you want us to approve it without these approvals, and then you can ask for those later?
We're going to have to do that soils report. That has, that's going to be done. Yes, you can put that on your plans, because we are going to do it, we have to do it, because we don't know what type of soil we have underneath. So where I do my house is how I do my soil test. Then they advise us to either get soil out, put good material in, and then that's when we do it. But if we go and do something right now, it's a big expense, we're already going through a big expense. So that's the reason we're asking for that right now. If we get approved, then we have to do that. We don't want his house to settle, and then walls are coming down, that's the reason for it. Thank you.
So just real quick, I think we can make it easier on everybody if we approve it the way that it is without any of the waivers, and then you guys can ask for those later? Is that kind of what, once they're there?
We would be okay to do it, but what I'm asking is, I'm not sure how it works on the next step for how you explain it. That's the reason I'm kind of like...
So you're, I think you're asking for it so you don't have to pay for it right now just because it's a replat, right?
Correct.
But once you come in and you do the improvements or whatnot, then that's when you will come in and have that expense.
That's correct.
I don't have an issue with that. My concern is the easement. My concern is, so, and that's what makes it hard to kind of vision the house, but if you could kind of walk us through how you see the house and where you see it, that would help us a lot.
I think, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Sisdenos. I think that when, once you place the house, right?
Yes.
Facing Ernest Road, how are you all going to exit and enter?
For Ernest Road, at least.
Right?
That's exactly the answer.
Ernest Road was, for example...
If you could speak into the mic.
I don't think we can pull up a map.
Mr. Betancourt, if you could speak into the mic, please, sir.
Okay, so that's, see where that arrow is right now, we have the arrow? That's the road, right? So the house will be, so we're going to have a driving point past the road, Ernest Road, and Ernest Road will be our entrance to the property.
And it would go to the right, or...
It will go to the right.
Right.
If I'm saying it goes to the right, towards north.
So my question is, so would there be enough space for, in the future, for Ernest Road to continue there?
Oh, yes, there will be, yes, there will be.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, we're not, as for the future for us, since I've spent with the family for so long, for so many years, we're not planning on selling anything.
And I'll be very frank, I don't have an issue with giving you any of the other waivers, but, oh, this is great. Yeah. So, the way that I'm interpreting the plans is, not only is there enough easement, I'm perfectly okay with giving you all the other ones, and you guys make those decisions as they come along, but the way that I'm looking at it is, we can deny the easement, and you're planning for it anyways.
Yes.
Okay.
So like I said, that road will still, like you say, in the future.
Okay. But, but you're requesting a waiver for the easement, and you're requesting a waiver for the soil treatment. I understand that it's not a requirement, a box to check off, to submit it. But I, I think it would make our job easier to vote yes or no based on, because you, you are requesting these waivers. Right? So, I definitely understand that you advise them that, hey, it's not necessary to, to submit it. But because you, if we weren't asking for waivers, then then makes everything easier. But I, I think it would've been, ma- made our job easier if you would've submitted them.
Well, again, the, I'm sorry, the waivers asked because we're not being approved yet. So, once we get approved, then we will, we'll do all that, 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 that's required. That's the reason we asked for the waiver right now.
So, so if you're, if you're gonna ask for the waivers later, would it be, would you want us to approve it without these approvals, and then you can ask for those later?
We're, we're gonna have to do that soils report. That has, that's gonna be done. Yes, you can put that on, on, on your plans, because we are gonna do it, we have to do it. Because we don't know what type of soil we have underneath. So, where I do my house is how I do my soil test. Then they, they advise us to either get soil out, put good material in, and then that's when we do it. But if we go and do something right now, it's a big expense, we're already going through a big expense. So, that's the reason we're asking for that right now. If we get approved, then we have to do that. We don't want his house to settle and then walls are coming down, that's, that's the reason for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, just real quick, I, I think we can make it easier on everybody if we approve it the way that it is without any of the waivers, and then what, you guys can ask for those later? Is that kind of what, once, once they're there?
Uh, we would be okay to do it, but, uh, what I'm asking is, I'm not sure how it works on the next step for, for, uh, how you explain it. That's the reason I'm kinda like...
So, so you're, I think you're asking for it so you don't have to pay for it right now just because it's a replat, right? But once you come in and you do the improvements or whatnot, then that's when you will come in and, 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 and do, have that expense.
That's correct.
I, I don't have an issue with that. My concern is the easement. My, my concern is, um... So, and, and that's what makes it hard to kind of vision the house, but if you could kind of walk us through how you see the house and where you see it, that would help us a lot.
I, I think, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Sisneros, I think that when, once you place the house, right? Facing Ernest Road, how are you all gonna exit and enter?
Uh, Ernest Road, uh, at least...
Right?
That's exactly the answer.
Ernest Road was, for example...
If you could speak into the mic... Mr. Betancourt, if you could speak into the mic, please, sir.
Okay, so that's, see where that arrow's there right now, where you have the arrow? That's the road, right? So, the house will be, so we're just gonna have a driving point past the road, Ernest Road, and Ernest Road will be our entrance to the property.
Uh huh. And it would go to the right, or...
It will go to the right.
Right.
If I'm saying it goes to the right, towards, towards north.
So, so my question is, so would, would there be enough space for, in the future, for Ernest Road to continue there?
Oh, yes, there'll be, yes, there will.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, we're not, uh, so the future for us is that, I've spent with the family for so long, for so many years, we're not planning on selling anything.
And, and I'll be very frank, I, I, I don't have an issue with giving you any of the other waivers, but, oh, this is great. Yeah, so... The way that I'm interpreting the plans is, not only is there enough easement, I'm, 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 I'm perfectly okay with giving you all the other ones, and you guys make those decisions as they come along, but the way that I'm looking at it is, we can deny the, the easement, and you're, you're planning for it anyways.
Yes.
Okay.
So, like I said, that road will still, if, like you say, in the future.
Okay.
If you wanna build the road that connects to the other side, there'll have room, there'll be room there.
Okay, that, but you do have, you, do you understand that if we do deny that waiver, right?
Sixty feet.
That those, that eight thousand square feet or whatnot, you have a twenty, twenty-five, twenty feet setback from that eight thousand to where you can start building that house? You guys understand that? That portion?
How, how much?
His site plan is at sixty feet setback.
That's right there.
Sixty feet?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, he's already... I think our problem was, is that we didn't know where you were gonna put your home.
Oh, okay, that was...
You know, were you gonna put it right at the base of the line?
Oh, no, no, we're not gonna put it, no, no, we're gonna have plenty of room in the front.
Okay, so I think that, uh, that was our biggest concern.
Yes, because you never know, that's why.
You never know, you might decide to go to California.
Oh, oh.
No, and we appreciate you guys, we keep planning for that road to come in.
Oh, yes, I understand that.
And that's what was ca- so heavy on our hearts to say, oh, my God.
Yeah, because you don't, like I said, I don't know the neighbors in the, in the future, but other than that, for now, let's say, on our end, we're not gonna sell anything at all, but we're gonna have that over.
Okay.
Just in case.
And you guys don't have a problem with leaving that as an easement?
We should be fine. Like I said, that's, that's just a road, kid, because if they ask us, because in case of emergency, we're gonna have access for the fire truck, or that would, they have a road to go into the property. In case of some, in case of some emergency, emergency or something.
So, so we can go ahead and approve everything except, just, okay, all right. So, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else's?
I'm ready.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, so, I wanna make a motion to approve with, um, for the preliminary and final plat with the approval of, of only the stormwater drainage requirement and the soil analysis requirement, not the, um, and not waiving the easement requirement. If that makes sense?
Any seconds?
All second.
I have a motion made by Andrew Royos, second by Enrique Sisneros, to approve the platting, the preliminary and final plat as well with the waiver of the stormwater drainage and the soil analysis, um, waived as well, and not to, not to waive the easement, um, waiver requirement.
Correct.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried.
Thank you, Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Item number six, public hearing, public hearing for the proposed amendment to the Court of Ordinance of the City of Socorro, Texas, Chapter forty-six, dash zoning article four, district regulations to add the district regulations for the A-one agricultural zoning district. Mr. Royos?
Good afternoon, we open a public hearing at six forty-four. No?
Uh, good evening, uh, Commissioners, uh, staff will be recommending to postpone items six and seven, uh, as well as eight and nine, uh, to the August nineteenth, uh, planning and zoning meeting.
So, do I have to close public?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we will close public hearing at six forty-four.
Do you have a motion to postpone items six, seven, eight, and nine for August nineteen?
I second.
Sorry.
You need a motion, right?
Yes, I need a motion.
I make a motion to postpone items six, seven, eight, and nine to August...
Nineteen. And then second by Ms. Julie Dominguez. All those in favor, I have a motion made by Dev- um, yes, David Estrada, and second by Julie Dominguez, to postpone, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Item number ten, Planning and Zoning Commissioners Report.
Real quick, and, and it might be above, or kind of out of our purview, but I know, it's my understanding that the City of Socorro has like a working relationship with, with Idea School District and the Socorro Independent School District. I know it's probably impossible for it to happen this year, but my question is for staff to talk to city leadership to see if in the future, and it, it might be the case right now, is there a way that we can stagger the releases for Socorro High School, the Idea, all, all three schools that are on Moon Road? Because it gets crazy to pick up kids after school.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually on Andriovista.
Oh, Andriovista, yes, thank you.
Andriovista.
It, it, I mean, granted, it was the first day of school.
Yeah.
And so, we picked up my daughter, she's a friend, it was the first day as a freshman. It took us like forty-five minutes to get in and out. Completely understandable, but, uh, my, my thinking is, if, is there a way that we could talk to them so that they could have staggered releases to try to accommodate the roads that just, they're, they're not big enough for that? But anyways, that's...
So, like the high school, Idea, and then Sanchez?
Yeah. Because it's not just crazy.
What time do they relieve?
You know what, I, I, unfortunately, I don't, I, they should've done that homework before I, you know.
And so, you're asking to consider staggering the...
Yeah, to staff to talk to leadership, to talk to the district, see if there's, there's a solution there.
I, I think that, that Idea and Sanchez are at the same time, and then the high school is after Idea and Sanchez, to my knowledge, that's what I've...
And, and if there, and maybe there's another solution, so, anyways, or just bring it to the attention of city leadership. It is, it's crazy.
I'm there every morning, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's not just crazy, it's like a lot of congestion.
Yeah.
You will sit there, even if you're not picking up kids. You will, if you cross through there, you are stuck there for a very long time.
And, and maybe it's an emergency services kind of preview or preview, whatever the correct saying is, but, purview, yeah. Um, but, yeah. That's by default.
Yeah, and I, and I have one item, uh, we talked about the school zone that went all the way from, uh, Las Cruces to Vegas. And, uh, I, I, I was wondering whether you had had an opportunity to tell us on that. Because I actually looked at how far it goes, it goes all the way to Lark Road, which is at the corner, right there at the shopping center where the, uh, General Dollar Store is at. That's how far it goes. So, you're looking at like maybe fifty yards from the other side of Valero, um, the Speedway? It's like fifty yards that way, the school zone starts. And then it goes like five hundred yards to the other side. And that is, it's not about, it's not about the fact that we're looking at, um, uh, it's the congestion that it causes, because, uh, you know, some are going thirty, but some are trying to go fifty. And when you're trying to change lanes to get to the corner, to Horizon, everybody is buckling up, because you cannot move over anymore. You know, because the school zone went so far. And for those of us that actually pay attention and go thirty, you know, then you're stuck, you can't move. You know, so, it, it's not, it, it causes more of a congestion and more hazard than it causes, than it helps for the safety. And I never see any kids, ever, walking, anymore.
Anymore.
There is a way, you know, at least on the legal side, because I, so my law firm, actually, we represent Idea Public Schools as well, so, it's a charter school, but they do have, like, public meetings and hearings and stuff that are scheduled, you can look at their agenda. Uh, but with also the school district is because it's a public entity, they have their own, they have their own board, they have their own meeting. So, you could go there and voice that concern, and I, I just know probably like the bigger hill it is to climb with the school district is that, you know, the release times or anything, it's like coordinated with the buses and the bus schedules, and then the parents picking up the kids. And then when they hire the bus dri- I don't know how bus drivers, if they sit around all day waiting for after school, or if they get paid in between, but then they have to kind of coordinate, even if it's ten, fifteen minutes, whatever it might be. But I think they, uh, the biggest thing is that if you have a concern is, that could be voiced to the school district, because that, they have more control, they're a larger entity, and then it's very possible that Idea or somebody else will kind of fall in line with whatever the other school's doing.
Yeah.
They can talk with each other.
I think El Paso is actually the only city that I have lived in where all the kids go in at the same time. All the kids come out at the same time. So, you get all the traffic in the morning with all the school zones and all the buses, because everywhere else, they scatter them. Like, you know, in Corpus, they would go in at, all the high school kids were going in at nine o'clock. All the middle school kids were going in at seven forty-five, you know? And so, it, it was just, you would, you would just, you would, would, you would just not have the traffic. You know, and I don't think that El Paso has ever looked at that. And, and here, because we feel it, because the schools are so close together. You know? So, yeah, that's a big problem. But you're right, we should go to a school board meeting and, and voice our, you know, what we have.
There is some level of coordination with the city, at least, like, Socorro City, at least, like, they, we can coordinate a little bit. But I know because even if the city wants to do something, we have to coordinate, and, you know, it's kind of territorial, I think, if you tell the school district.
Yeah.
You know, the board, hey, this is, we're gonna tell you, they're not gonna hear it, you know, so I'm like, but if a parent's go there and they voiced a concern that, hey, this is a hazard, this is not safe, actually, um, that actually will get their attention more, you know?
Yeah, and we've got a new school district chair.
Superintendent, yeah.
And, and a new rep for this side of town. He came to city council a month ago?
Manny Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's...
He's a young, smart guy, guy.
Energetic.
Energetic, yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, yes, sorry. Um, for the A-one zoning committee, will there be another meeting?
Yes, and that's the, one of the big reasons why we didn't, uh, weren't prepared to present today. So, we will have another meeting, hour or two, before the agenda.
Do you have an idea when, when you'll try to...
Uh, no, I, I will try to, to send out that email tomorrow to, uh, see everybody's availability.
It's, it's tough, I saw that last email, and it's hard to put everybody together.
Yeah, it's gonna be difficult, so, we're gonna have to do our best to accommodate each other.
So, I do have one question.
And hopefully, now that school's back in session, the, we have more, everybody's not taking breaks.
So, I do have one question, so, so if we're gonna move, um, the A-one item over, is there a reason why we wanna put the last item on the same one when we approve or don't approve? Can we, can we jump it to the next one?
Uh, we can.
Yeah. I'm just thinking that it's, um... It's more difficult, I think, um, when you have a big crowd, because I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna have a big crowd. And then we're gonna either approve the A-one the way it is or not, and then we're still gonna go back, and then you're gonna have a big crowd for the, the other item that is on there, the rezoning one. So, could we skip it to the next one, so approve the...
At this point, do you reopen the agenda item to make that recommendation, or...
I'm just saying, is there, or do we wanna do that?
Is there, what, did, did, was there a timeframe that she needed to...
The, um, team that is undertaking the desalinization project is hoping to start sooner rather than later. Uh, this would assure them that they have the go-ahead to continue with their planning and progress. So, I, I know that on their end, they would like to see, uh, a resolution and, or action on their item. Um, that would be, uh, they have started, uh, dialogue in keeping the grant, um, the grant, the grant fee, whoever's giving them the funding for the project. Uh, progress reports and, and I don't know if another delay will impact their funding through the grant.
Which, which...
Bureau, I think the Bureau of... I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna say it, I, I'd have to go back to my notes.
Which, which I think is very important, that we, that we try to... I know it's a huge undertaking, but I, I think that knowing that federal funding being what it is right now, uh, being pooled and, and, and cuts, I really think that the faster we get it done, the better, because it is such an important project for the country.
And we can also, uh, present their item again when they did, uh, to refresh your memory about what the project all entailed, to have them make that presentation again, and maybe update it with any new information they have. I know that I have a couple of items that they shared with me that I need to forward to the committee. Uh, information about a grant, funding for a different project, to, to highlight how innovative this is and, and forward-thinking this project is, and then the, the water quality report. Which is something that the committee had asked for.
Yeah, mine was just a question, I, I know, because we did have, we, we had such a, a big crowd.
Yeah.
You were asking to reopen it today?
No, no, just asking if we wanted to, but, but...
I was asking if it would be more appropriate.
We'll, we'll, we'll try it again, the, the item was on the agenda again today. We had four people in attendance to speak, so we will try to, uh, broadcast that this is, again, being presented, reach out to the people who we have, um, phone numbers for that attended our, uh, community meeting where we talked about the A-one. That was very well-intended. Uh, I think that we hopefully address some of the issues and address the misconceptions and some of the rumors that were going around, and why we don't have as many people, but just to be on the safe side, we will, uh, make a better, a good effort to reach out to, uh, the, the, the public to attend this, this next meeting. And I, I personally don't think we need to separate them.
Okay. That's cool.
I think, yeah, to answer your question, is that the chair, and you guys can decide at any meeting that, based on how many people are here and how many items are, if you don't wanna make, you know, there's two or three people waiting for a small thing, you can decide, let's hear theirs first and let them out of here.
Right.
Yeah.
Or, you know, vice versa, if you wanna hear the big thing first, then everybody's gonna wait. So, there's a way for you guys to look at it, you can talk amongst, as soon as we get in here, start the meeting, say, can we move up items, so? You'll see city council does this all the time, can I move up these items first? So, we can get these quotes out of here, or, you know?
Sure. And I guess one last question, uh, their request to turn into an A-one, it doesn't get approved automatically or go on to city council thirty days after it comes here?
No, no, that's zoning.
Okay.
This is, this is a zoning request. The thirty, thirty days is subdivisions.
Okay, thank you. Good.
No, anybody else?
I'm ready.
You're ready?
Nope.
Okay.
Item number eleven, Planning and Zoning Department Report, Ms. Kimido?
Thank you, Miriam. Uh, Lorene Kimido, City Planner. I don't have too many items on the director's report, I don't have any updates on any of our current projects other than maybe Nuevo Waco tanks. We are still waiting on environmental clearance, the city, the city has, engineer has submitted everything to TechDOT, and we are just waiting for, um, environmental clearance to go ahead to the next step. That April letting, of April twenty-twenty-six letting is still what we are targeting. That may change. I don't have any other updates on any of our other projects. And I, uh, the information about what staff is doing, I attended a conference in Waco last week, uh, January twenty-ninth and thirtieth. It was TechDOT's Transportation Division, uh, twenty-twenty-five Transportation Project Delivery Conference. They have this conference every two years, and they share with TechDOT, um, and TechDOT partners advances, innovations, cha- uh, changes, uh, that are coming up in, in TechDOT. I learned a lot about what's going on at TechDOT, uh, all of the, of advances technologic- technological advances that they're pursuing to help move projects forward more efficiently. Uh, just for example, robotics, uh, to go out into the field to collect survey data, three-D data in situations that are hazardous to, to the workers. Aviation, where they're, they have a program for the districts to send staff to get training to use drones. They have two drones in, in the, in the fleets, and then a small, a small, teeny tiny small plane. So, that's really exciting to see, uh, learned about new programs for local governments to be able to process, um, um, our projects, um, more efficiently. A new course that TechDOT's gonna offer free of charge to local governments, uh, that'll go over the procurement process. And as you know, or may not know, there are classes that us as staff have to take when we are going to be involved in TechDOT-funded, federally funded projects. People have to be, staff has to have at least one person certified to, uh, be... to be able to manage those projects and, and relay that information be that go-between between TechDOT and the engineer or the, the local government's consultant. And then another piece, and then a piece of good news. Judith has been promoted to planner for the city's Planning and Zoning Department, so I wanted to just congratulate Judith and all of her hard work and dedication to the city, and we're going to be very nice to Judith and not, not ask her hard questions. When is her turn to present? Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Alrighty, item number twelve, considering take action on the adjournment of this meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
I have a motion made by Julie Dominguez, second by Andrew Royos to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at seven oh one P M. Thank you.